To the Bellevue City Council regular meeting first Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Welcome back from the break. I'm really glad to see everybody for the first time at our meeting tonight. City Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmembers on.
Here.
So we have two proclamations to read tonight. The first one is Childhood Cancer Month proclamation. Deputy Mayor Nguyen House, could you read that, please?
Certainly. Whereas pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed with some form of cancer by their 20th birthday, and whereas 80% of childhood cancer cases are diagnosed only after the disease has metastasized and spread to other parts of the body, and whereas 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will have long-lasting chronic conditions as a result of the treatment they go through, and whereas there has been 24% increase in pediatric cancer cases over the last 40 years, equal to 43 children per day, or 15,780 children a year diagnosed with cancer in the U.S., and whereas the National Cancer Institute recognize the unique research needs of childhood cancer and increased funding to conduct this research, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently to dedicate their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and to find a cure for all childhood cancers. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council to hereby proclaim this month of September 2020 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all people in Bellevue to join us in this special observance.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. The next one is National Recovery Month, and Councilmembers on, could you read that, please?
Yes, absolutely Mayor. I think it's really important with, especially with COVID and everyone, so many being inside. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall wellness, and whereas preventing overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas an estimated 400,000 people in King County are affected by related conditions, and whereas as a community, we must encourage those we know with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to the appropriate treatment. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, King County, and the City of Bellevue invite all residents of Bellevue to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council to hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as National Recovery Month in Bellevue, and call upon the people of Bellevue to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's theme, Rising Above It All: Wellness, Resilience, and Recovery.
Thank you Councilmembers on. So now we're on to the approval of the agenda, and we have to amend the agenda to include an item in the city manager's report. And then also, we are going to, at the request of Councilmember Lee, move item F from the consent calendar to other ordinances for further discussion. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the agenda, amended to add one item under the report of the city manager regarding an update to the mayor's pledge, and then move item 8F from the consent calendar for discussion under other ordinances, resolutions, and motions.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, so we're on to oral communications. City Clerk, do we have any oral communications?
Thank you Mayor. This evening, there were no speakers signed up for oral communication.
Okay. So now we have the report of the city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Thank you Mayor, councilmembers. I have two items to report on with respect to the city manager's report. The first one is the Amazon donation to the, for the City of Bellevue Human Services Fund in the tune of $1 million over the next four years specifically to be used for human services. We have joining us Brian Hughesman, Vice President of Public Policy from Amazon, and I'd like to just turn over the stage to him to provide a few remarks to the council. Brian?
Hi there. Thank you City Manager Miyake, and Mayor Robinson, and Deputy Mayor Nguyen House, and councilmembers. I really appreciate the opportunity and the time on the agenda this evening. I am Brian Hughesman, Vice President of Public Policy at Amazon, and Amazon is so proud to be growing in Bellevue. I think as you all know, our founder and CEO Jeff Bezos, he started the company in the garage right here in Bellevue, and since that time, we've been pleased to have been a significant investor and job creator for people for all backgrounds and skills across the entire Puget Sound region. And we have more than 55,000 employees across the region, including 3,000 employees working right in Bellevue. We opened our first office in Bellevue in 2017 because it has exactly what Amazon is looking for in a community, a high quality of life, a fantastic talent pool, great amenities, and a business-friendly environment. And that's why on Friday, we announced that we'll be bringing 10,000 more jobs to Bellevue over the next few years, and that's in addition to the 15,000 jobs we announced back in February. We're very excited by that and just thrilled with the excellent working relationship we have between your staff and between you all as city leaders, and definitely that collaborative attitude and solutions-based approach helps us, and it helps, I think, all businesses, large and small, provide consistency and clarity. So, but in addition to bringing these jobs, our commitment to the community is really key. We want to be a fabric, part of the fabric of Bellevue. We want to be a good neighbor. And so as an initial and small down payment on that commitment, as the city manager mentioned, we're pleased to make a $1 million donation to supplement your Human Services Fund, and we hope that those funds which the Human Services Commission will allocate over the next two funding cycles will bring additional resources to bear to help support families in need. And, you know, I know that, you know, with COVID, it's been challenging, you know, with everyone, and, you know, has amplified existing hardships, but we are really impressed at Amazon by the city's simple but effective tool to get funds in the hands of nonprofit organizations and support those families in need. And we're very proud to help stretch that work just a little bit further. So again, I'd like to thank you all for time on the agenda. If you have any questions, if you have suggestions about Amazon can be a good partner or a good neighbor, please contact me or my staff. We have got Jared Axelrod and Guy Palumbo working very closely with you all. Amazon really looks forward to a long and productive and growing partnership with Bellevue, and I thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hughesman. Mr. Miyake, what's the other part?
Okay. So the other one is with regard to a status update on the pledge. You know, I just wanted to take a minute to update the council on the progress we're making on the council's pledge to review public safety practice and in particular, the police use of force. By way of background, after the tragic death of George Floyd earlier this year, citizens across the nation and locally were moved to evaluate the continued reality of systemic racism. As a result, the council pledged to review police use of force policies and procedures to identify any needed reforms as a way of creating meaningful change that ensures the safety and respect for Black and Brown people and other people of color. Your pledge, as you might recall, encompasses four steps. The first one is reviewing the police department's use of force policies. The second is engaging the community by including a diverse range of input experiences and stories in the review. Third, reporting out the findings of the review to the community and seeking feedback. And fourth, reforming, if necessary, the department's use of force policies. In line with that direction of the pledge, we are moving into the review and engagement phase of the pledge, which in turn will lead to a report and identification reforms that may be needed to reach our objective of eliminating systemic racism and ensuring that Bellevue's values are reflected within these critical policing policies. As I alluded to earlier, an objective of this phase of pledge process is to understand how policing policies can continue to be improved to ensure Black, Brown, and other people of color are safe and respected, which in turn will ensure the entire community is well-served by this important public safety function. Now, we do believe that Bellevue has made strides in this area already through the community policing relationships that have been built by the women and men of the Bellevue Police Department, but it's important that we continue to engage with the community to understand where we can continue to push ourselves further in this respect. This sentiment represents the culture of the police department. As Chief Millet often says, "Part of the mission of the Bellevue Police Department is to ensure that people in Bellevue feel safe and actually are safe, that we must work with the community to ensure this is true for all people." So in order to launch this work, we needed to hire specialized expertise in the form of an independent reputable third party, and I'm pleased to share that we now, excuse me, have a consultant onboard. The consultant is the Office of Independent Review Group, also known as OIR, and is based out of Playa del Rey, California. The five-member consulting team has a combined experience of nearly 100 years in review of law enforcement practices and policy, and the team members have broad, deep, well-respected expertise and experience. This team has substantial experience on police internal investigations and critical incident reviews, including police-involved shootings and deaths while in custody. They've also conducted multiple evaluations of oversight systems and even entire policing operations, and are very capable facilitators of public forums and have faithfully incorporated public feedback in their recommendations. So some examples where team members have provided similar expertise are Madison, Wisconsin, recently in Santa Clara County, California, Los Angeles County, California, Ferguson, Missouri, and Charlotte, North Carolina, just to name a few. And since the council's pledge became public, my executive team have been actively searching for consulting groups with the right skills and balanced approach that would fit Bellevue. And recognizing this type of expertise is very specialized in high demand across the country, we reached out to agencies, professional associations, and academic institutions for referrals. Some of the criteria we used in the search were consultants that had clear and substantial knowledge of policing policies and practicing, practices, a track record of a balanced review and objective perspective, had widely respected expertise, were highly experienced in public engagement, and have worked specific incidents involving people of color with law enforcement, and brought to the table a strong perspective outside of law enforcement, such as through academics, law firms, and independent research firms. After several conversations with professional organizations, as well as experts in this field across the country, referrals led to other referrals, which led to hiring the Office of Independent Review Group, as I mentioned, also known as OIR. I am very happy to report that OIR has begun its evaluation of department's use of force policies, and we are already mapping out the logistics for gathering public input using virtual platforms and anticipate the community engagement process to begin in late September, early October. I will provide the council with more details within the next two weeks on the community forums, and we'll make sure updates are pushed out to the community through our website and other channels. And as we work to progress, make progress with this this fall, and continue to keep the council informed with relevant updates. So this concludes both of my reports for this evening, Mayor.
Sorry. Onto the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So we have two resolutions tonight and two public hearings. And Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce those for us?
Sure Mayor. We have two public hearings this evening with regard to relinquishment of easements. The first one is a partial release of two utility easements, one sewer and one water. The easements were declared surplus back on October, August 3rd of 2020. And following the public hearing, we're asking the council if they're ready to take action on the proposed resolution to release portions of these two easements in front of you this evening with regard to the public hearing. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Ira McDaniel, our real property manager. Ira?
Alright, thank you Mr. Miyake, and good evening Mayor, councilmembers. Our first staff report is on a request to release a portion of a sewer easement and a portion of a water easement located at 515-116th Avenue Northeast. And tonight's public hearing is to allow the public an opportunity to comment on the release. So this is the property outlined in purple. It's the city's Lincoln Center property, which many of you are familiar with. Sound Transit's East Link alignment goes through this property as shown here, running from east to west through the property. And Sound Transit's guideway columns are in locations that conflicted with our old utility alignments. Sound Transit rerouted our water and sewer lines to run around those column locations, and as a part of their permitting process, Sound Transit's requested that we partially release the sewer easement and the water easement. So the portions to be released are shown here in yellow. The existing easements are in solid green and solid blue, and then the crosshatcher shows the new easement alignments to kind of wow out around those columns. So that's the story with this one. And following the staff report and the public hearing, we'll request council action on the proposed resolution authorizing the partial release of these easements. This ends the staff report. Are there any questions?
Okay, well, let's, let's get a motion to open the public hearing first.
I move to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City Clerk, do we have any public testimony to hear?
Mayor, there were no speakers signed up before the public hearing this evening that had pre-registered. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone on the call as a participant that would like to speak, please use the raised hand function, or please use star nine if you're connected with a phone. Mayor, there is no one indicating they would like to speak.
Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there a motion to do that?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We can now, if anybody has any questions or anything to discuss, now is a good time. I can see everybody. There we go. Okay, any, any questions or anything to discuss with Ira? Okay, seeing heads shaking. Let's go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
Okay, I move to approve Resolution 9816, authorizing execution of documents necessary to release a portion of an existing sewer easement and a portion of the existing water easement located at 515-116th Avenue Northeast that has been declared surplus to city needs.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Resolution 9816 passes. And now we have Resolution 9817. Mr. Miyake or Ira, did you want?
Yeah, this is, I'll just do a quick opener here. This is for release of a water utility easement. Again, this was, this easement was declared surplus back on August 3rd of 2020. And again, following the public hearing, the council will be asked to take action on the proposed resolution to release the surplus easement. Again, I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Ira McDaniel for a quick staff report. Ira?
Thank you. Our second staff report is on a request for release of water easement located at 1111-118th Avenue Southeast. And again, tonight's public hearing is to allow the public an opportunity to comment on the release. The property in question is located, again here in pink, off of 118th Avenue South, just south of Southeast 8th. This property is being redeveloped, and the easement for our old water line, which is shown here in red or orange crosshatcher, is in conflict with the proposed new four-story self-storage facility. All of the water lines that are on the property will be decommissioned, and all of the new water main facilities will be to the east of the property inside the public road right-of-way, so there's no longer a need for this easement. So again, as a part of their permitting process, the owner has requested that we release the old water. So what, following the public hearing, staff will request council action on the proposed resolution authorizing the release of this easement. And that's the end of this staff report. Are there any questions before opening the public hearing?
Let's go ahead and open it, and then we'll, we can ask questions after, Ira. Okay, thank you.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, is there any public testimony for this city clerk?
As with the first hearing, there were no pre-registered speakers. So at this point, I would ask if there's anyone connected to the call that would like to speak, please use the raised hand function, or star nine if you're connected with a phone. Mayor, it doesn't appear that there is anyone raising their hand.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there a motion for that?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So we'll open this for any questions or discussion. Is there anything anybody wants to ask or say? Otherwise, just shake your head and we'll move on to the vote. Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and get a motion to pass this resolution.
I move to approve Resolution 9817, authorizing execution of documents necessary to release the existing water line easement located at 1111-118th Avenue Southeast, which has been declared surplus to city needs.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So Resolution 9817 has been adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have a study session item. We get to get a economic development update. Mr. Miyake.
Thank you Mayor and councilmembers. We do have, in front of you this evening, an economic development, economic development update materials were provided in your packet earlier. This is one of our routine update to the council regarding to economic development, the economic development work plan. Tonight's presentation has a very special focus on rail opening efforts in the wake of COVID-19. Joining us this evening is Jesse Canador, Chief Economic Development Officer, as well as Chris Goddard, Public Private Partnership Manager. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Jesse.
Thank you City Manager Miyake. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, we're very happy to be here with you tonight, even in the uncertain circumstances around the economy, to share more about the work that's been happening between the city and our, our community partners to help support the business community and our residents through this, through this time. Chris, next slide, please. So tonight is for information only. We're not seeking specific action from the council, but we will, of course, entertain questions and answers at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. On tonight's agenda, it'll be a mix of items that highlight some of the challenges faced by the Bellevue community over the last few months, as well as the strong efforts that have been made by the city and our partners to help with the reopening efforts and help provide some additional certainty for our businesses as they weather the pandemic. I'm in the midst of all of the different activities and the uncertainty. The city has responded well and is well-positioned relative to some of our peers, and we will, we'll discuss that tonight. The specific agenda items are future of office, such as we can share today. We'll talk a little bit about some of the exits that have happened locally. Quick info on the efforts to get the PPE equipment out to the community. Briefing on our work citywide to help our restaurants in particular with expanding outdoor operations. Discussion of some of the welcome-back messaging that's being led by the chamber. Info on the heart of Bellevue campaign that the Bellevue Downtown Association is working on to help increase consumer confidence. Some reporting on our small business work and some of the financial support that local businesses have been able to access. And as always, we'll end with an update to the council on what's next and what activities they'll be seeing or updates they'll receive over the next few months. Next slide, please. So teeing it up with the future of office, of course, we'll start with last week's exciting news that Amazon will be leasing an additional 2 million square feet of office space that's being built by Vulcan and bringing additional 10,000 jobs into Bellevue. With that announcement, their leases mean that all office space currently under construction in the city is spoken for and fully leased. This does reflect continued optimism and confidence in Bellevue and our office market. In addition to Vulcan's work, Schneizer West, Scanser, and Columbia Pacific Advisors have all publicly signaled their desire to start construction on their respective office projects later this year or early next. So again, a lot of confidence. Our downtown office vacancy rate remains very healthy, 3.9%. So meaning that 96% of our office space is occupied at this time. The new construction and the signals that there are more office space will start construction is being supported by our office brokers who indicate that a lot of our smaller tenants in particular, those requiring less than 10,000 square feet, are starting to actively look in the market again. So still lots of interest in Bellevue as the place to be for, for large employers, for small employers, and for many employees. From the companies we've spoken with, they are foreseeing a hybrid future once the COVID-19 is more firmly under control. A hybrid future where there will be more work-from-home opportunities for their employees, but where their employees will still be in the office two to three days a week. There are a lot of benefits from the additional flexibility of work from home, but many of them do anticipate and see a strong need for all-hands meetings, whiteboarding sessions, innovation sessions to be happening in the office, because a lot of that requires very deep in-person collaboration spontaneity that just isn't achievable through online means. So additionally, what we're hearing from our employers is that the pre-COVID trend of individual space becoming smaller, so individual workspaces shrinking, may reverse with firms taking more square foot, more square feet per employee to help provide for that additional physical distancing that may continue to be required. So the, the counterbalancing trends of additional work from home with more space per employee may end up balancing out and being net-wash in terms of office space demand. But that's, a lot of that is still uncertain. That's just what we're seeing in the market at the moment. But we do know that many of our office, larger employers in particular, our office tenants have signaled that they will not return to the office in force for at least another three to six months. So we are keeping tabs on that. We are engaged with our large employers, Amazon, Facebook, Salesforce, and others to understand what their needs are, what their trends are, and make sure that we can be proactive in helping them create a safe environment for their employees and their customers to get back to. For the moment, the prolonged duration of the work-from-home does mean, of course, fewer workers in downtown, fewer visitors, and therefore fewer customers for our downtown restaurants and retailers. So we will talk a little bit more in-depth then about how we're helping to support those particular industries to help buffer them during these, these quiet months in our central business district. Quick note, on this slide, you are seeing the results from the Bellevue Downtown Association's survey of their members to see what the pandemic and the future looks like for them. Of the 65 members who did respond, it was a mixed bag on what, what the future of office means for them. So 32% said yes, that future work-from-home trends would impact their space needs. 41% said no, and 27% said they were unsure. So again, reflecting that there is still a lot of uncertainty, but as we look, kind of projecting onto the future, we do anticipate more of that hybrid model taking hold. Next slide, please. Next, on a slightly less, on a less enthusiastic note, there were some exits that happened in the last six weeks. Perhaps the most notable one being the announcement last month that REI intends to sell its Spring District facilities. This is unfortunate, but as we understand it, it really was a decision made in the best interests of the company and keeping the company positioned amid the uncertain retail environment. It was not a reflection on Bellevue's business climate or the relationship that they built with city staff and preparing for, for their HQ. In fact, city staff is working with their real estate team to see if we can find a space. In fact, city staff is working with their real estate team to see if we can find a space that meets their reduced needs. We still hope to have Bellevue be the home for REI's smaller headquarters. And while it's unfortunate that the co-op will not occupy the building, we are still fortunate that they are delivering a beautiful bespoke and very sustainable building that will be a gem for Bellevue and a gem for the ultimate owners and occupiers. The building will be LEED certified and will include best-in-class energy efficiency, numerous outdoor spaces to connect the future employees with the outdoors. And the landscaping is filled with sustainable native and very edible vegetation, as you can tell from the numerous fruit-bearing trees, the strawberry plants and the grapevines that have been planted around the campus. The eventual owner and the eventual user of the building will definitely have a best-in-class asset. There is a trophy, a trophy building here in the Spring District. So while we are said that they will not be, REI will not be the primary occupant of the building, they are still delivering a benefit for the city in the long term. There is no details on who the potential buyers of that space may be at this time. On the retail side, Dallas-based Neiman Marcus did announce as well their intention to close six stores across the country as part of their pathway back to profitability. That does include their space at the Braver, which will, that closing of that store will open about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of space for retail. While the space will go dark for a bit, it does also open up an opportunity to reposition that space for the future. We have spoken with the mall's owners as well as the property managers, and they are while they are said that Neiman Marcus is exiting quite early from their lease, they are also very enthusiastic about the opportunities to re-tenant the space as they look at all of the growth coming into downtown Bellevue, the new residents, the new employees, the new tourism-related infrastructure that the facility was working on. They do see a very bright future for that space and are very confident they will be able to re-tenant it with the right folks. On the note of smaller, more local businesses, food and beverage is definitely another segment that has been facing some significant headwinds. While fast food and takeout options are performing particularly well at this time, sit-down restaurants have been struggling significantly, especially in our downtown core where there is again a reduced foot traffic. In the downtown area, Heavy Restaurant Group perhaps is the most notable for having announced the permanent closure of Purple Lot Number Three in their Cast Iron Studios space. Those spaces, like many of our downtown restaurants, really depended on that midday peak office occupancy, all of the the workers coming in for lunch, they for happy hour grabbing dinner before going home. So the dramatic decline in in-office occupancy for the short term has definitely had an effect on their business. So we are working with the Downtown Association, the Chamber and the and other organizations to help do bring some additional light and focus on to the businesses downtown. Again, to bring some some focus so that folks from outside of Bellevue and even Bellevue residents know that there are still great restaurants and great businesses to patronize in our downtown core. And again, much like our office market, even with some of those spaces going dark, there's still a very great interest in Bellevue. Just the other day, the STK Steakhouse announced their intention to take over the old Palomino's space at the intersection of Bellevue Way and the Grand Connection. That is a very notable new tenant coming into downtown because that particular steakhouse has locations on Collins Avenue in Miami, in San Diego's Gaslamp District, on Denver's Fifteenth Street Mall, and on New York's High Line. So quite a impressive list of locations, and to have Bellevue added on to that list definitely signals strong interest and confidence in the future of our downtown core and our restaurant scene. But as I was noting, you know, the decreased amount of traffic definitely highlights the need to draw people into downtown for reasons other than work. And with that, I will hand it over to Chris to detail some of the efforts that we're participating in to help draw those those feet into the businesses.
Thank you, Jesse. It's great. And you can go ahead to the next slide, please. So good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, council members. Again, thank you. So due to the impact of the pandemic and unprecedented challenges facing our local businesses, we wanted to share some of these positive stories and some of the examples of how our team and our local partners are being proactive with efforts to help the economy rebound. Fundamental to our economic recovery is ensuring a safe environment for our residents, visitors, employees to return to participating in the in the economy. Whether you're visiting a restaurant or a store or an office, or if you're an employee of any business, having access to proper PPE is essential. And with that, I'd like to highlight and thank the Bellevue Chamber for their efforts in this space through their partnership with the city and with Kent County, along with delivery assistance by the Amazon treasure trucks from One Redmond and Amazon. The Chamber is able to provide over a thousand businesses with more than a hundred and twenty thousand masks and more than three thousand five hundred bottles of ham sanitizer. And in addition, the Chamber also assisted the city with distribution of sixty thousand cloth face, faith cover, cloth face coverings to our local residents. Next slide, please. And as Jesse just touched on, the challenges facing our local restaurants are numerous. Safe start reopening restrictions on indoor seating capacity and reduced interest in indoor dining from restaurant patrons concerned about possible COVID nineteen risks have really threatened the viability of some of our restaurants and bars. And so in response, the city is really focused on facilitating expanded outdoor dining options and to provide restaurants expanded revenue generating opportunities and a safe environment for our residents to feel like they can come out and safely participate in the economy. For restaurants and bars citywide, the city has created and aggressively promoted resources, resource guides highlighting some of our existing tools like our sidewalk cafe permits for expansion of dining in the right of way and our land use temporary use permits for expansion on private property. In Old Bellevue, as many of you have maybe heard, you know, following extensive community engagement, city staff worked closely with the Main Street Businesses, residents, the Old Bellevue Merchants Association and the BDA to facilitate the city's first ever on-street dining program, where we were able to convert on-street parking spaces into outdoor restaurant space. Through these efforts, we've seen ten food and beverage establishments apply for sidewalk cafes. We've opened five on-street dining locations, and and this work has also sparked interest and received out, and we've received quite a bit of outreach from many of the small businesses from across the city interested in expanding outdoor options. Included in that are our five additional temporary use permits where we've seen businesses against expand into the into their own private property. You'll note on this slide a quote from a Main Street business owner following our work with him to deliver on-street dining where he's said that this has really been a game changer in terms of revenue for the restaurant and couldn't be happier. Really hopes that this is something that can become an annual tradition. There are many more quotes like this where that came from, and we look forward to returning to council in November to give a full debrief on these efforts. Next slide, please. In addition to responding to immediate business needs, city staff and our partners have also been proactive in thinking about how we can accelerate our recovery. Since the early days of the pandemic, staff have participated in the Bellevue Chamber-led efforts to develop a campaign welcoming residents, businesses, tourists to reemerge and reengage in our economy, as well as a shared strategy for elevating Eastside communities and showcasing our businesses, events, and our quality of life. This initiative through those efforts is coined Eastside Together strives to unite our Eastside communities and drive a rapid and robust economic recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic, leveraging some of the key themes and messaging tied to our tradition of cross-sector collaboration, our visionary approach to problem solving, and as our Amazon colleague tonight referenced, our business-friendly environment. This initiative really will use partners to create and aggregate content that can be amplified through those daily social media posts, paid ads, earned media. You know, again, really driving home the message of of the Eastside's collaboration and it being a great place to be to do business. So stay tuned. This is getting ready to launch, and the formerly side together kind of campaign will launch, and we'll be sure to update you on that. Next slide, please. Moving from messaging efforts at a regional Eastside level, the city has also been deeply engaged with the Bellevue Downtown Association on a recovery campaign designed to support and retain businesses and attract customers back to downtown, or as the as the campaign suggests, the heart of Bellevue. This partnership-based placemaking and marketing effort really builds off the success of our our work last year, the city's twenty nineteen Grand Connection Activation Partnership. And and this time around, it's been really designed to promote downtown's offering, drive downtown's offerings, drive activity and foot traffic back to the to the downtown, strengthen downtown sense of place, connect customers, residents with our local businesses, and ultimately boost economic activity. Since launching earlier this summer, the BDA's multifaceted campaign has included in-person visits with nearly sixty-five local small businesses, print, digital marketing efforts, highlighting dozens of local businesses across Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, as well as thirty long-form in-depth interviews with individual business owners. They've also profiled and promoted downtown stories of activity and creativity and recovery, highlighting things like the virtual summer music series, interviews with local artists that would have otherwise been at the arts fair that had to be canceled, and as well as highlighting Bellevue's numerous outdoor escapes. And again, this is all in addition to the colorful lanterns and the heart of Bellevue banners along the Grand Connection, and as well as what you'll soon see along the five-five-five Vulcan site, a kind of a construction wrap along that fencing that includes additional kind of heart of Bellevue campaign materials. And beyond that, I also just want to highlight that, you know, one of the many ways this content is reaching the community is through the BDA's weekly email blast, more than ten thousand five hundred recipients. I think since the start of the campaign, I think their open rate is on that blast is at close to thirty percent or over thirty percent, meaning that, you know, more than three thousand people per week are engaging with this content. And that's in addition to all of the views that are there and the thousands of views that they're reaching through different social media channels. And again, we're going to be really excited to come back and report back to council on on the all the details of this campaign later in the in the fall. Next slide, please. And lastly, we just wanted to provide a council with an update on the small business support efforts connected to financial assistance with regards to the federal paycheck paycheck protection program or PPP for short. Data is still limited at this time, but what we do know is that more than four thousand businesses in Bellevue have applied for and received PPP loans to retain employees and pay critical business expenses. These loans are limited to businesses with five hundred or fewer employees, and the vast majority of those Bellevue loans, close to thirty-four hundred, were made below a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, indicating strong penetration with our small businesses. For the for the Bellevue Small Business Grant, Business Relief Grant, which is still accepting applications through September seventeenth, we've already received more than two hundred applications. And as you know, ensuring robust outreach and awareness regarding these critical resources throughout our diverse community is perhaps one of the most important things that we can do and that our staff is really prioritized at this time. You know, for example, as we continue to spread the word on the loans and grant opportunities that are available, we've had one-on-one conversations with community partners like the India Association of Western Washington, the Chinese Information and Service Center, Eastside For All, the Small Business Education Hub, in addition to steady outreach to over twenty ethnic chambers and business associations. On top, on top of that, we continue to back this outreach up with really in-depth technical assistance in accessing and applying for these loans in any language requested through our partnership with the Business Impact Northwest. So more efforts on all of these, more information on all of these efforts can be available and found on our website at the bottom of this final slide, if you don't mind going to the final slide. And with that, I will hand it back over to Jesse.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so hopefully the council has a very robust understanding of the ways we're engaging with our community partners. A lot of that work will continue into the fall and early next year. So in terms of what's coming to the council or what the council may see over the next couple of months, the economic development plan update is continuing on track. We'll be back on the twenty-first with the the full draft plan for the council's review, and then hopefully back for session number nine, which will be the final session in early November for adoption. The small business grants that Chris just mentioned will be wrapping up, and we will come back with those final allocations on the consent calendar. Very confident that we'll have a robust robust applicant pool in there, as Chris mentioned, already over two hundred applications. Fifty-six percent of those business applicants are women-owned businesses. Thirty-seven percent are immigrant or refugee-owned businesses, so definitely doing very well within a diverse set of the business community. We'll be back with a full report, lessons learned and possible next steps on Main Streets and all the work we've been doing with outdoor dining. Bellweather will continue this year. It'll be in a virtual format, but we will continue the annual arts festival for for the East Side, and you'll get a pre-briefing on that in November before it launches. And then there will be a report from the BDA on their heart of Bellevue work, again, with lessons learned and potential next steps on how we can continue to position Bellevue as the heart and soul of the East Side and as the economic heart of the Puget Sound. So with that, we will open up for questions and comments from the council.
Great. Thank you very much. That was a really good presentation. Give it everybody a chance. It is for information only, but I'm sure we have comments or questions. So I'm gonna call on you in this order, Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmembers Zahn, Councilmember Robertson, Stokes, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Barksdale, and then myself. So with that, Councilmember Lee, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you. Well done, Mayor. A good report. Nice work, you know, specific to the audience, the target you were going after in this particular effort. Well done. I have a couple of questions. The statistics obviously is good, you know, and it's good information, so I don't need to go into all the specifics, but just the questions. You mentioned that some of these businesses that are going out, like, you know, REI and Braven, Neiman Marcus, and so on. And we're hoping that this is a good prospect that new business will move in. And in fact, you mentioned some company from Texas already raised some inquiries. So I'm just wondering, where do these leads, new inquiries coming from? You know, whether it came from the regional economic partners, you know, like GSP, or did us, we actively pursue these businesses? And if we do, what are we doing? If we don't, perhaps we should be considering doing some of that. Okay, that's the first question. Second question is, why don't you answer that first?
Happy to, Councilmember Lee. In terms of the recruitment and lead, so yes, we do have a very strong partnership with Greater Seattle Partners, GSP, which is the Regional Economic Development Group, and they are continuing to market the region as a great place to do business and to expand for businesses from outside the Puget Sound. So we're really leaning on them heavily at this point because they are the experts, have a deep amount of knowledge history in that space. We're also doing some individual prospecting, but to be quite honest, the the pipeline is is very quiet at the moment because there are a lot of companies, especially the larger ones, waiting to see how everything shakes out before making leasing commitments. But we are continuing to work with our active leads, both from GSP and from our individual Eastside.
Okay, so specifically, you know, the inquiry we have, are they, where did they come from? They just come from GSP or come from us, or just on their own that they come to connect with us?
The majority come from GSP, and we do some some individual prospect work on our own as well.
Okay, second question, time. You have worked also very well with the Chamber of Commerce and BDA. And you indicated there's a Eastside Recovery Map to be launched. So I'm just asking, what is the city of Bellevue's role, involvement in in both of them? And are they just strictly BDA's work or Chamber's work, or are we very much involved instrumental in those?
Yeah, I can take that, Jesse. I I would say they were engaged in all of them very hands-on. I think the map is actually, the Eastside For All is is the campaign effort that I think you're referring to. And that's really an effort in which we've come together with all of our Eastside city partners, as well as organizations like the BDA, the Chamber, One Redmond, you know, Kirkland Chamber, et cetera. And that's, so that's been a collaborative effort, but very hands-on by our staff, as well as the staff from from those organizations to sort of develop a shared strategy as in in response to the that the more local level, again, whether it's work with the with the Chamber, we've been in very good contact and and frequently collaborating with them on, again, the idea, the assistance with PPP and coordinating how we can get those resources out, our team, as well as with the Human Services Department. And then, again, with the BDA, that's 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 really a partnership effort, and and they've really taken the ball and run with 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 our feedback and and developed that program.
Thank you. By concluding, comment would be, as you are doing so well, and we still have spaces that potentially become vacant, and if they are now And if they are now, we want to continue to attract people to come. So I'm just, you know, wanting to mention to you that as when you get inquiries, when you sign up new tenants, I would like to know how much is due to what specific effort so that we know which one we need to emphasize on, whether it's because of through our effort, through our regional partners' effort, or just by word of mouth, or whatever that is. I think that's good knowledge, information to help us to, you know, fill our space. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Good comments and questions. Okay, Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you so much for the thorough report. I thought it was very helpful. I agree with the approach of the east side collaboration and messaging regionally. I think the east side together makes a lot of sense to create that partnership so that we're each contributing. Thank you for, I understand we've reached out to twenty different ethnic chambers of commerce to make sure that we are uh have an inclusive economy. I think that'll be really important. You know, my sense is that Amazon's choice to bring more jobs here, when they talk about quality of life, small business and having a robust uh amount of businesses is gonna be, is one of the draws, both for businesses as well as where people that live here. So we want to definitely make sure that that continues to happen. A couple of of questions I did have, and that is that when we talked about some of the work of outdoor dining, winter's coming. So I'm wondering about what other strategies might we might have, because unfortunately COVID is not leaving as quickly as we might want, even though the numbers are dropping in terms of the uh exposure. So I'd like to hear a bit about that. And then the other one is, um, as we think about the office development continuing, which is great, and at the same time, it seems like we need to really then um even increase our effort in affordable housing, making sure that our multimodal transportation to get people around and focusing on the environment. So as we look at that office development, it seems like we need to also be paying attention to that balance between office and residential as well. So would like to hear about um both of those. And then the last one is, you talked about the focus on downtown restaurants, but there's also a lot of neighborhood restaurants that are also struggling. So are, do they have opportunities to to expand out in their their parking lots so that they can continue to have people that maybe are able to dine at the restaurants? Thank you.
Absolutely, Councilmember. Um, thank you for those questions, and Chris, I think, can address those very specifically.
Sure.
Outdoor dining.
Sure, sure. So um on the first, on your first question, a little bit about the the what's next question. Obviously, our weather season here supports outdoor dining to a to a degree. But I think you're asking the same question that we're asking right now. And actually, as a matter of fact, we have a a session tomorrow morning where we've we've gathered a Zoom session gathered uh virtually, but we are hosting kind of a feedback session for retailers and small businesses to sort of ask that question, because I think, you know, while we understand that there's been a great impact to that additional outdoor space, we want to know, again, what are some of their concerns as we do head into the winter? We know that some of our major events in downtown are not going to happen and draw the same foot traffic that they normally would through the holiday season. We want to understand and ask questions about how they actually have used some of those outdoor options so that they, you know, maybe there are ways that we can adapt them and adopt them to be, you know, more more full season versus just seasonal. So we're we're kind of digging in on that issue right now. Obviously, it's also going to be connected to our promotional efforts and and connecting all of our businesses to the Heart of Bellevue campaign and the east side together so that they're actually seeing that added bump from the visibility of and and tugging on people's heartstrings here locally in Bellevue to go out and support our small businesses. So those, that's how I'd probably answer the first one. Uh, the the last question about the outdoor dining options more citywide, you know, we do have temporary use permits that so businesses can apply for, and we've been doing pretty extensive outreach to to property owners and businesses through our through our networks and channels on that, so that you can go in and apply to convert portions of your parking lot or portions of your private property to to expand your space. And I think I had mentioned, we'd seen five of those permits already um i- in the city.
Maybe warm blankets and heaters, umbrellas. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers Zahn. Councilmember Robertson. Muted.
Okay, sorry about that. I have to join my colleagues in thanking you for the great report. Uh, and I really want to call out how hard the Economic Development Department has been working along with our partner agencies to really try to help our businesses and our community during COVID. I think it's, you've done so much, and I appreciate you guys coming here to daylight it, but it doesn't, it only shows a fraction of the work, and I know that you guys have been working really hard on that. So a couple of questions. One issue that's been coming up um is with regard to internet reliability. As more people are working at home, as all of our K- twelve kids are coming from home, we got an email to council today about glitches in the internet, because there's so many people using nine or eight in the period when all the school kids are on. And, you know, if you're in a household and you're working from home and you've got your kids on the internet, it doesn't matter how big of a um system you have. If you have the most expensive broadband or internet system, it's you're, it's slowing you down. So that's affecting business and that's affecting education. So what, if anything, are we doing to try to address that issue?
That is a great question, Councilmember Robertson. Um, and so we are discussing those particular issues with our our IT department as well, which oversees differentiating for from the service providers. Um, and it is, it is definitely an issue, and we are, we are contemplating what steps the city might take to support more robust service as we as we look at potential long-term work from home and those those enhanced internet requirements.
Great. I would love to have an uh an update on that when we know more. Now, I just saw the Bellevue School District, we're at seventy-seven cases for a hundred thousand uh population as far as positive tests right now. When that gets to seventy-five and below um for a two-week period, Bellevue School District's gonna start their hybrid reopening, but still, we're gonna have kids at home every day. So this is gonna probably remain an issue, plus all the work from home for a while. So I'd love to get an update on that when we know more. Um, second, on dining, um, I know, I agree with Councilmembers Zahn. You know, it's great to su- uh support the outdoor dining as the weather changes. You know, there are outdoor heaters, but people are gonna need weather protection. And I know that um temporary covers do require a building permit um of some sort. So there's, you know, IFC review, et cetera, that's International Fire Code, um, for those playing alphabet bingo. But um the uh, do we have a way that we could streamline that so that we can um help these folks, you know, when the weather starts to turn, be allowed to put stuff up? As, you know, and it has to be safe, but is there a way we can streamline that?
So we've been working really closely and actually want to applaud our team and Right Away for just how much they've completely turned over every resource to try to support all the businesses through these applications and these permits, because they're complicated and they require a lot of due diligence, and they've really busted their tail to 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 make them happen quickly. And so I'd say, as as part of a question, I think we're gonna ask tomorrow, I think we've already heard from our Right Away team that they're willing to kind of consider a lot of options. I mean, whether, again, from a safety perspective, that's sort of their first and foremost concern, but there are ways, you know, again, the the existing cafe permit are are year-round, so you don't have to go back and reapply for a new permit. So it may, it's, it may be just a shorter pathway to amending something that you already have, and especially if you're not moving tables, you're not adding tables. There may be, you know, ways in which we can sort of evaluate those more quickly than we have, you know, typically taking someone through a normal process to get those permits off the off the ground. So I think, and we do know that, again, heaters are allowed and other things, again, so long as the the appropriate distances and safety measures are taken.
Okay, great. Glad to hear that. Um, finally, um, well, actually, two things. Uh, one is, I, with the falling COVID rates at, you know, Bellevue, I looked, I'm looking at the dashboard right now. The past fourteen days, our positive rate's been two-point-two percent, which is far below the five percent that CDC says is critical to starting to open up again. Do we have a plan yet in place for how to get the message out that it is safe to come out? It's safe to, safe to frequent businesses, it's safe to eat out. How, and if we don't, when can we expect to see something that we can roll out with our partners?
So, Councilmember, I would say on that question, that is definitely um one of the impetuses behind the Heart of Bellevue work, as well as the uh the East Side Together campaign that the Chamber is leading, to make sure that folks understand what are the the changing um conditions, what is it safe to do, what businesses are open, and to encourage folks to safely um or appropriately participate in the economy.
I I failed to mention of this, of the, there's five real pillars to that campaign on the east side. I mentioned the business-friendly piece and our collaboration, et cetera. One of the fifth, one of those five pillars and real themes is about safety and sort of COVID response to that safety. And so that is exactly, as Jesse said, one of the key things that the the campaign will be messaging is that it is safe, our businesses are safe, they take the best precautions, and this is a place you can feel good about coming out to shop, dine, et cetera.
Right. And one of the reasons Bellevue's got such a low transmission rate is because, I think, because people are wearing masks. People everywhere are wearing masks in business, and Bellevue's, hey, we're winning. Those that are watching at home, keep doing it, because washing your hands and wearing masks, it's making it really safe. Finally, I I want to make sure that we work together with economic development in what, as we're doing the budget for this year, both capital and operations for the things that we need to do to support our businesses, whether it's, you know, making sure that we have the transit, you know, working with our partners there, making sure that we have the right projects, making sure we're funding the operations that keep people investing in Bellevue, and that's gonna be even more important with the Amazon announcement. So Jesse, we're gonna be looking for advice from you about how to make sure that we are doing the right things uh with this next budget. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, great comments so far, and I really, really appreciate the uh presentation and the focus and of broad scope. I mean, you're doing a great job of balancing a lot of different things to make it all much more um cohesive and uh at the same time, very reaching out into different areas that sometimes don't go together so well. And to follow up on some of these other comments made, one of the things that I'm excited about is um with, and and it's really great you're focusing on people going out and at small businesses and eating out, because that is, that's something that people miss, and I think will help uh bring people back into downtown and the areas, and I do agree, we need to look out uh past just downtown on this whole effort, too. You know, one of the things that I was really excited about back in two thousand and twelve, going to BDA Denver, is going to Laramie Square and eating on the sidewalks, and that was something we finally got around to. So that's great. And there have been some questions raised about how does that work and had uh the the emphasis of uh or the questions of cars zooming by on the streets while people are eating, and whether we're looking at um possibly having some streets be strictly for pedestrians and for restaurants for eating outside. I know that's, you know, has a lot of pros and cons on that, but I just wanted to raise that issue because we have gotten a couple of emails about that, and uh I know that's a a concern, how that all works. But I think it's a great idea, and I hope we increase that uh and actually do have more you know, bike and and pedestrian uh walkways and trails and all that connect with the businesses and all. So I I'm glad we're going, we're experimenting that, and we're working on that. So that's very, very good. The uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, and and I didn't hear anything about this in terms of East Side Together, and I think this, obviously, in her you know, are uh all the work we're doing regionally is very important. Bellevue is a great leader in the region. And one of the things that connects us also, and it should be kind of included in this, is the east rail. Because that's, you know, we have a, that's, that's a multi-county uh vehicle as well. But it does tie us together, and one of the places in the future we can look to is having events along the rail, and it connects so many other pieces. So I'd like to see a little emphasis on that as as this developing. And, you know, the partnership is growing very strong, and again, it's the same people who are working in the economic development piece, and it's part of that. And the other thing that I really congratulate you on is uh tying in with Bellweather and all the other aspects of um the creative economy and and arts and culture in Bellevue as a part of this whole piece, because people come here and we will continue to attract big business, small businesses in between, if we have a vibrant restaurant, culture, arts, music, atmosphere in Bellevue, and we can be the premier city for that. So I think these are all good things we're doing, and I really appreciate the work that's been put together on that. And uh, you know, I do think we have to look at what's what's happening now with people, how are people affected in the city or, you know, current residents affected by COVID, how they're affected by all the different things that have changed. And I think what you're doing, what BDA and the Chamber and the city is doing, is really helping people focus on looking at it in a positive ways we go forward. Uh, I think that gives us all a great hope that when this nightmare is over, we're gonna come out in a really good space. And the work you're doing is really leading to that. So I really appreciate that and 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 the work the department's doing. So I'm excited about it, looking forward to further reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I'll echo what my colleagues have said. Great report, a lot of positives here. Just a couple additional comments and questions. So um my, my first comment is that I'm so glad you have that um that quote in there from that restaurant owner. I was actually dining on Main Street on on Friday night, and it was amazing how many people that were were out um and taking advantage of the expanded um outdoor dining. And uh after talking to a couple of additional business owners, multiple um said that they'd love to do this not only potentially year-round, but potentially make sure they do it again next summer. Um, I think there is appetite to um to to somehow um allow for outdoor dining, even when the weather turns a bit colder and it does get into rainy season, there does seem to be some appetite to to do that. But definitely want to bring back the expanded outdoor dining and 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 seating areas, regardless if we're out of the pandemic or not. There there truly is uh um an appetite for that, and it really did add just a great atmosphere on 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 Main Street as well. You know, I I think going forward, that's just gonna be just a great thing for the city to attract even more restaurants and more patrons to to Maine, but throughout the rest of the city as well. I'm just speaking to Maine because that's where I was at. But I really want to implore the residents um of Bellevue to, as much as they possibly can, continue to um go to or order from Bellevue restaurants, continue to go or order from small businesses, et cetera, because, you know, our economic development team is working very hard, uh coming up with a lot of great um solutions. But um, you know, a lot of them are are somewhat temporary. I mean, just like we're talking about here with the outdoor dining, or a a temporary loan or a grant that's only gonna last for so long. And I'm so glad to hear that, um, you know, the uh the the Together East Side, we're 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 trying to encourage more folks to get out, uh and that's, and and that's really, really important, because if our residents don't support, and it's more than just our residents in in the surrounding area, but if they don't support our small businesses, and I'm talking restaurants, arts, other small businesses that are that are surviving, but they can only survive so long on a lot of these temporary measures. So I just want to put that out there. I really hope that our our residents really try to um, you know, go go to all the great small businesses in 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 our city. It's so crucial. It really is. Especially, um, this is going on for six months now, and we don't know how much longer this is gonna go. So um now, uh, the Councilmember Stokes, I did mention the the arts, and I wanted to to get a little bit more information on that, Jesse, if I could, because I think you did a really great um wrap-up here of, uh, again, a lot of restaurants and other small businesses. But for me, what I keep hearing, too, is that the art sector of our city is hurting um very much right now. And I'm, quite frankly, you know, I know this is a priority for a lot of my colleagues, and I, you know, and I'm really concerned about what the art sector is gonna look like in our city after this pandemic. You know, I know some of them are barely surviving right now. Is there any other information you have on on that sector, or is there anything else that you're working on right now that could be of help to these art organizations?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, thank you for that question. Um, so there are a couple of different things that we're doing to help support the arts community. So one um important thing is that arts organizations and creative businesses are eligible for the small grant, small business grants. So that's a key piece right there. Um, two is, we are, um, we did expand our um capacity building program, our power-up program, to help our arts organizations understand how they can improve their business practices or level up, I'll say, this year. improve their business practices or level up, I'll say, this year to help with meeting the demands and pivot the need to do during covid. Our arts manager, Scott McDonald, has also been individually meeting with our arts organizations. I think he's done nearly thirty individual one-on-one sessions with our arts organizations to understand where they are, what kind of assistance do they need. We are participating in now bi-weekly calls with the reconstituted Eastside Arts and Culture Coalition to help understand what the ecosystem is looking like on the east side. And then one of the big things that we have done that we have not concluded the the report yet, so we don't have the official numbers for you tonight. But we did partner with our neighboring cities on the east side to do an arts participation survey to understand what are the artistic or cultural experiences that east side residents are looking for. What will will do they want to do things virtually? Do they want to do things in person? What level of safety measures or or virus control will need to be in place before they'll engage in some of those activities again? I'm very happy to say that we got nearly eleven hundred responses from across the east side to help inform. And the reason that we did that particular survey is we want to arm our arts organizations with user data and customer data so that they can make informed decisions about how to pivot their business model. I think one of the the great examples right now is that winter grass will be coming back in a different format this this coming year. So while they won't be able to do the big event that takes up all of the rooms in the Bellevue Hyatt, they will be doing more curated experiences to continue that experience that that spirit of winter grass until they can come back hopefully in 2022. So we are working with our arts organizations to make those digital pivots as much as they can and be ready for when it's safe to do things in person again.
Thanks, Jesse. That's a great answer. And yeah, that's really what I'm looking for. It's like, what can we be doing right now to prepare for? For example, the Bellevue Arts Fair, you know, what can we do now? And it sounds like you're doing some great due diligence and research right now. But what can we do to prepare for that? The pandemic is still not over. We want to move forward with the with the fair. But obviously, we need to put different processes in place to make it safe for everybody. Or other performances, maybe outdoor performances or other 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 avenues that these art organizations can take to to remain active and alive in this community. So thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Barxale.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So a lot of good questions, a couple that I've had in mind that have already been addressed, but I just want to emphasize is just really making sure that we're covering all of Bellevue with the work that we're doing. I know we're City Hall and the Chamber and BDA are all in West Bellevue, but really looking at ways that that's what I encourage us to continue looking for ways to get across Bellevue with what we're doing. In terms of the financial assistance, I think you said two hundred, there have been two hundred applications. How many have been awarded and what's the distribution by like industry? If you don't have it, I can you can send to me later. And I guess just one of the other industries that I would also encourage for us to consider is childcare. So just curious about how we've been looking at that that industry as well.
Happy to answer those questions, Councilmember. So with the the grants question in particular, we have not awarded those yet. So the application process is still open through September seventeenth, I believe. And so at that point, we'll be going through the lottery system. And because of the nature of the funds, we do have to come back to council for final approval before those dollars are dispersed. We are hoping to do that on consent sometime in October so that we can exponentially get that money back out into the community. And we will be able to report at that point full demographics sweep on size, background, etc. for the businesses. With regards to childcare, it is definitely an item that comes up very much in our discussions across the board. We don't have any good solutions or recommendations at this point. We're still very much in discovery mode on that. But we definitely understand that childcare is a big issue. We have seen reports that as many as fifty percent of the childcare businesses could go out of business over the course of the pandemic. So it's definitely top of mind because it was an issue before the pandemic and will continue to be one after.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm thinking about sort of the larger chains, but also the neighborhood childcare centers as well. Because I think there's a lot of value in those as well that we want to support.
Absolutely. We will continue to study that topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor, do you have any comments from the human services perspective on funding for childcare?
I can tell you that's an active conversation, and we're constantly looking to fund those organizations in a way that can help relieve parents who are unable to go to work because they they don't have that that daycare facility there. So it is top of mind, you know, certainly with the additional funds that we're receiving from Amazon, we are going to be able to fund more organizations and and hopefully be able to help address this even more because it is a clear need in the community.
Yeah, I'm just wondering to make sure that it doesn't fall through the cracks that maybe we could have human services and economic development talk together about looking at childcare as a community need as well as a business.
Yeah, that's a that's a great point, Mayor. I'll make sure that that indeed is happening.
Thank you. Okay, I just had a couple of questions. First of all, I reflect on my colleagues' comments. Excellent job. This is all really good to hear. Really appreciate getting appraised of the latest information on Bellevue. And we've got good news. You know, we've got some challenges, but we have a lot of good news, which I feel blessed. In terms of the restaurants that eat dining on Main Street, I I live down there now, so I got to participate in seeing that before and after. And boy, what a what a wonderful thing that is, just the energy now. And, you know, not being able to get reservations until like nine o'clock at night on a weeknight, that's crazy. But that's 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 how successful it is. So very good. But I I noticed that there is a bunch of parking, maybe three or four on-street spaces right next to France Chocolates that just have planters. And I'm wondering, why aren't we utilizing that space? Do you have plans to utilize it or what's the deal with that?
Sure, I can speak to that. And I would get, I think we'll probably want to give a fuller debrief again when we come back on on how we engineered all of this with our with our partners. And right away, I think I think we we did explore every inch of of Old Bellevue for opportunities. I think there was a concern with because that's at a T intersection that there could be some sort of traffic. You know, if someone stops paying attention, runs that light coming from the south, they would be, you know, heading directly towards towards potentially a dangerous situation. So I know that was one of the concerns. But again, we did look at all of the the options and 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 we'll give a full debrief on on kind of on the mechanics of that when we come back in in November.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we can return it to parking spaces. If it's not going to be used for any dining, it seems like it's being just kind of wasted parking space. So just to look into that would be good as well. Thank you. And then the other question was kind of what Councilmember Barxale said, what are we doing for the other parts of of Bellevue for crossroads businesses and Eastgate and Wilberton and and all those other areas that have small business? Are we looking to do creative things to help them as well?
So I can tackle that one first, and Chris can definitely share what he and his team are working on. So Mayor and Council, absolutely, we are looking at different opportunities across the city. There are definitely some, you know, bandwidth and capacity challenges. There are, there are many needs compared to staff hours. But we are working with Visit Bellevue and other organizations like the owners of Victoria Mall and the management group over at Crossroads to make sure that the information is out to them, and they will be participating in hopefully in future sessions. We'll do listening sessions to understand how we can help them further navigate and improve the situation throughout the pandemic. I will know that there is a plan, a strategy in the economic development plan update that does call for creating more merchant associations because there is a need for more groups like the BDA and the Old Bellevue Merchants Association to help us as community partners in developing those solutions.
That's great. Okay, thank you very much. I think that that's everybody. So thank you again for the great presentation. Okay, so Councilmember Lee asked that a particular item be pulled from the consent calendar. And I believe we can have staff do a brief presentation on that. Mr. Miyake, did you want to introduce?
Chairman, this was item eight F on your consent calendar, which was a resolution ninety one five authorizing the execution of a general services contract regarding fabrication installation of art along the northeast corner gateway of downtown park. This comes after this has been in front of council for a number of times in terms of the artwork itself. Joining us this evening is Matt Cummins, as well as Michael Shiasaki. Mac is the Director of Community Development, and Michael is the Director of the Parks Department. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Mac, for as well as Michael, for a brief description of the project and any other information you'd like to share that you feel is relevant for the council in making a decision whether or not to approve this resolution.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. It's nice to see everybody here this evening. It's nice to be able to be live, too, as well. So I I'll make a few brief remarks on this tonight. We brought this back to you on consent calendar. It may seem like a lifetime ago now. This was one of the very last study sessions the city council held before covid. And the stay home, stay healthy order was issued. In February, the council had a study session specifically to look at this piece of public art. And public art may not be due app description to what the piece itself is. It's actually an integral component of the the park and the northeast, the gateway into the downtown park at Northeast Fourth and Bellevue Way. And the February study session was the culmination of roughly two years worth of planning on this particular effort. So sometime before that, the city council adopted Grand Connection Framework Plan, a number of other policy documents, an arts and culture plan relating to the Grand Connection, and began the process of looking at a variety of different ways to improve placemaking in and around urban areas and specifically in the downtown. In those documents, that corner entry point to downtown park at Northeast Fourth and Bellevue Way was identified as a quote unquote key gateway. And that key gateway was meant to have a series of features meant to be placemaking, driving people, pedestrians particularly, in and out of the park and into the downtown as you think of the Grand Connection route. So as the city went about how to execute those concepts and implement them, we started on a multidisciplinary effort, some of which was park design related and some of which was arts related. So the Parks Department was working on the the parks design. And the city had its art commission working on the selection of an artist and ideas around what type of art could be placed here as part of that key gateway concept. Council actually had multiple study sessions through those two-year processes, but it was the February session where the final decision was made on this particular item, which is the piece of art. And council saw the art that evening and then directed us to bring this back to you on consent. And then between that point and now, obviously, we had the covid time period and then worked out a few few final details and brought it here to you this evening. So you know, with that, I'm happy to stop and take questions if the council has any at this time. Otherwise, I think that I know the artist is ready to get going, and construction on the parks already started. You can see some of the the framing out there and where some of the initial concrete is going.
Well, I'll go ahead and and let everybody have a chance to speak. We'll do it in this order, starting with Councilmember Lee, then Barxale, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmembers on Robertson, Stokes, and then me. So Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate pulling this item from the consent calendar so that we have the more, you know, discussion on it. I have some, you know, to allow me to allow me to to share with everyone, you know, my concern. My concern is not about the project. This is a great project. We are agree, we are approved. And as you have heard from the previous discussion on economic development, art is a very important piece of the stool on economic development. Even more than that, it's part of our community's quality of life, you know, so it's important, very important. So it's not a question about the project itself. I fully support it. And, you know, the question really is a matter of timing. We've just, you know, in the midst, I was going to say we've just gone through covid nineteen. I'm being optimistic. We're not. We don't know how long this will last. But we see the impact of covid nineteen. Lots of people are suffering. People, you know, more than that, you know, people are suffering just from, you know, losing lost income, loss of security. Economy is down so far and don't know how long it's going to be. But the reality is even today, I don't know how many of us have been going to grocery stores. And this this year alone, grocery price has gone up twenty-five percent, one quarter increase. So it's a another right time. So I saw this and I just felt that there's a lot of, and also just heard from previous discussion. There are many, many, many things we want to do, we want to accomplish, many things is important to us, no question about it. And we've been very lucky. Bellevue is a very good city. People are responsible, economy is good. And but don't forget, because economy is good, we are able to afford a lot of things. And but now situations change. Like any other cities, we are also being hit. We know we are facing this shortfall. You know, we're going to have a budget deliberation coming up. We're going to be making tough decisions. We're asking the staff to tighten our belt. You know, we are going to do some tough choices, priorities. So I'm just thinking that in light of all these comparisons, this juggling of projects that we know and we don't know, we're going to be hearing from the staff, from city manager, how are we going to juggle all these? And the one that stand out right now, you know, which, you know, it's difficult. I'm not saying it's good or bad, but I'm just looking at it that it's a project that may be able to defer not even on the merit of itself, but in comparing to other projects we want to do, where we facing the budget deliberation that's coming up on us. And so I ask, what is the consequence? What is the the impact, you know, of not doing it now, doing it a little bit later, whatever that may be? Is it, what is the cost breakdown of the eight hundred and ten thousand dollars? That's a big chunk of money. It's a lot of money that we are just providing for people who need rent rent protection protections, who need to put food on the table. You know, there's a lot of things we need to do. So I I would love to have the opportunity to hear from staff. What's the cost breakdown? What what are we talking about? How much are we going to be impacted if we defer the project? You know, if it's impossible, I'd like to hear that. You know, I, yeah. And I haven't got that answers yet, and we haven't heard the discussion, but I really would love to. And then we can decide, is it worthwhile to talk about? Is something we can cover with something else? What do we have to give up in order to do this? And what is the cost of costs? What's the benefit of comparing with other projects we want to do? We heard the whole year full. I'm sure we can just count on our hands, maybe hands and feet. But so without those information, I would just feel that it would be very hard to let people you know, see that it's hard for me to justify to people that we're spending this much money and maybe even more to do this, and which doesn't have an immediate impact on economic recovery, on getting people back to work, by keeping people, you know, safe and doing whatever we have to do. There's a lot of things we have to do. So I would like to propose, actually, because without the information I was asking for, you know, how much activity do we have? But I know there may be more, some people suggested, there may be even higher costs if we delay it. That's fine. I like to know what it is. Right? If it's five dollars, you know, I think we can handle that. But if it's half a million dollars, it might not be worth it. But we'd like to know what it is. And what 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 been increased costs and what's impact? And then what is the avoidable and what is not avoidable if we defer the project and hold on? So this information I like to have. So my proposal would be, let's take the time for the staff to give us that information, you know, so that we can look at it. We can have facts and information to to make those decisions, you know, what is, how much are we talking about? What is the impact? You know, what's avoidable, what's not avoidable? Then we can make a decision. Then we can explain to our citizens, you know, this is how we decide on spending valuable resources at the You know, this is how we decide on spending valuable resources at a time when people. You know, are going through this moment. So.
Okay, council member Lee, we've, we've heard your request and so I'm going to ask that everybody, every council member have a chance to speak to this. So. Before we engage with staff. So council member Barksdale, you're next.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the sentiments, council members leaving remarks. I would say though. That, you know, we've talked about continuing to support the arts. It appears to me that this is already largely funded. And I think especially during this time when people are indoors and sort of disconnect, I mean. I see the arts as a way to help bring more of that energy and, and help with the mental health of the people in our community. So I actually think it would be. In our best interest to continue with the project.
Okay, thank you. Deputy, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I too, you know, really appreciate council member Lee's comments here. Always the fiscal hawk and always looking out for the best use of taxpayer dollars. I really appreciate him. Flagging this issue. And for me, I would just need to know more as well. And I'm sorry if my camera looks a little bit darker at this, at this moment. You can't see me clearly, but. I would like some information on this as well. Clearly, you know, council member Lee is correct. There are a lot of people hurting. There's businesses hurting. But this is also, you know, something that we did approve, what, six, seven months ago. It has been budgeted. Completely agree with council member Barksdale that, you know, the arts do play and should play a very important role. There is something to be said about the, you know, outdoor park art experience and, and this project will certainly enhance that. I think it really will be enjoyed tremendously by residents and give them more reasons to be out and, and to interact with people. I mean, certainly, you know, given the latest statistics on, on mental health, this is critical. So, but however, saying that, you know, I think that these are good questions that council member Lee is, is asking and, and, and if. Staff has some of those answers today, that's great. If we had to wait a week for staff to get some answers in terms of. What would happen if we did delay this project? You know, would, would there be significant costs associated with that? You know, I think those are still good questions to ask and I, you know, and I would appreciate having that data before making a final decision. Thank you.
Council members on.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the comments and, and council member Lee. Pulling the consent items so we can have this conversation, because I do think it is a lot of money that we're spending. It is an anchor piece that the Arts Commission looked at very carefully. And considered what we wanted to do. And the arts are a part of what makes Bellevue a vibrant community. That draws businesses and people that want to live here and work here. So those things are important. I will say that when, when this item came to the council in February. I remember asking the question about, are these types of things, especially this large dollar value, one that we can find some partners that might be. Willing to provide some level of funding. And I think at the time. The discussion was that that isn't something that we had pursued. So perhaps this is an opportunity to talk about whether there's any possibilities there or not. And get a better sense for the questions about what would it look like if it? Was delayed. I do think that if we've already got a contract imminent, that there are going to be costs associated with any kind of delay. And so I think we need to be making those kinds of decisions very carefully before we actually. Choose to halt or suspend for any length of time. So I look forward to hearing from staff about some of these questions that have been asked.
Council member Robertson.
You, I appreciate council member Lee having this pulled so we can talk about it. I am really personally very excited about this project. When we saw the renderings. On February third and council said, bring it back on consent. I think to a person, we were all very excited. Now, we didn't know COVID was gonna happen. But we are under construction on this gateway piece right now. We've had people complaining. Or not complaining, opining, sharing their views about the loss of trees that we're taking out to build the space. If we don't. It not putting the art piece in would be the same thing as not replanning trees when we're taking trees down to work on a park. You have to replace the space with something. You can't just leave a big gap. And this is a really important piece. It is livability, it's mental health, it's economic development, it's community building. This is a really important gateway piece. We prioritized it. The art is part of it. I don't know how we would all feel if, you know, some other agency was doing a project and they decided to just leave all the nice finishes undone and blank. I don't think we would feel very good about it. And I think the people that use and live near and work near this park. Would be pretty appalled if we just left a big space of cement without filling it with anything. And that's what this does. It creates a gathering spot. And it creates shade, it creates a place where people can eat their lunches. And then it creates beauty in our, in our city. It is supposed, if we get, don't delay this contract, it's gonna be done over the winter. And ready for people to enjoy before spring. To me, that's really important, because if we delay this, then we're constructing the park when the weather comes back. When the good weather comes back, I mean to say, and then people can't use that space. And we've taken something away and not put anything back. So, and this is capital money. So we can't exactly yank it out of here. And start spending it on operations and other types of, you know, it's a different color of money. We can't do that. And so. You know, I'm, as everyone knows, I'm a huge supporter of the parks. I'm also, you know, a huge supporter of making sure that we do what we need to bring our businesses back. Making the right investments in our community that create beauty and gathering spaces. And stimulate that activity is just as important as it is of helping people pay their rent during the downtimes. Because that's what's gonna help lead Bellevue back into the future. And so I, I'm, I hope council can, or not council, hope staff can answer some of the council's questions tonight. But if they can't, I am still comfortable moving on with this. We had a robust discussion about this in February and I'm really, really excited about this and don't want to wait. The money's budgeted. Let's get it going. I can't wait for the ribbon cutting in February, March, when the sun starts to come back again. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, council member Stokes.
Yeah, I. I was really, really surprised. I was surprised as the liaison, the Arts Commission, I wasn't made aware of this at the time. And I would have appreciated comments between council members. But frankly, my colleague just said. Things that I wanted to say. I mean, I think Councilman Robertson just hit the nail on the head and. And all those aspects of it. And I don't know what staff's gonna tell us that we haven't been told before, but we can go through this process. And, but I, I think it's, it meets a lot of criteria and a lot of things we were talking about earlier in the creative economy aspect. It's, it's staff, it's people working. It is something that's important. In these times like this, to have something that is uplifting. It's something that. That's what art and culture is about. And. I mean, it's already, this is, this is something that, that this train has kind of left the station. And so putting a halt on it, it, one will cost time. It may have some real problems with the, with artists. It may have some problems with the construction, all these other factors. And. We're just opening up a kind of a can of worms in a sense. And again, and I, I like the picture that Councilman Robertson painted. I, I think people who are worried about and, and under all this stress from the COVID, the pandemic. Are gonna look at that piece sitting there with the concrete and everything else. And the question will get around like, well, Bellevue, the council's kind of pulling out of this thing. They're not gonna do this, whatever they don't. And that's just gonna have a, I think, a negative effect on people. And, and we, we're, this is not all about just dollars and cents or, or. You know, concrete or buildings. It's about people and making people feel that things are good, things are good or happening, and this is a great place to be. And again, this is. This is something that we've talked about for decades and the whole Grand Connection and, and making this whole piece particularly there. Something that is inviting. It's, it's something that's uplifting. It's something that, that goes to the heart of why we do arts and culture. And again. As, as has been said. We've had discussions about this. We've talked about this. Information's been there. We've had a lot of time in between who was coming back and, and no questions have been asked. And all of a sudden, at the very end, the question's asked. So. I, I think there's some real question, you know, we need, we can get the answers to some of those questions about the timing. But I think it's just gonna cost us a lot more down the line. We may just mess a project up. That is, is great. So. Appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I agree. Council member Robertson, you really did hit it on the head for me as well. And, and if you want to think about a project that got its budget cut. Think about the Maiden Bar Convention Center. Have you ever wondered what all those pipes and, and troughs are at the entrance? That is an incomplete project. And how many, that was built in nineteen ninety-three. And we have never come back and finished that. So that's, I fear that happening again, I fear for the artist who is committed. To getting this amount of money and probably has already completed the work and not getting paid as a, as a business person. And I'm concerned about the extra cost, like with the downtown park. Getting that last quarter finished and it was delayed a year and that cost the city a million dollars. Just because somebody wanted to think about parking. So I don't, I don't feel like we need to add any additional money to this project. And that brings me around to the eight hour rule. So we have only three people who are interested in revisiting this extensively. So I'm not going to ask staff to come back at another session, but we are here tonight and you've heard council members Lee's questions and the council members on. Also, and deputy mayor, if there's anything that you can address tonight, that would be of interest to them, I, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'll have a few comments and probably need Michael Shiasaki to weigh in on a couple of things too. So when we talk about potentially delaying, I think a number of council members here have correctly identified what the impact of not putting the piece of public. Art into the, the project would be, it would be an incomplete concrete patio, you know, with no shade effectively as the gateway entrance. The, the physical impact would be we're designing the, the plaza right now with footings and things to so you can anchor a fairly significant structure into the concrete. So when we talk about delaying, there's a point in time where that can no longer happen because you've already poured concrete into the ground. So you couldn't actually retrofit and drop a significant structure on top of the concrete without taking things out and significant cost at that point. You'd be reconstructing something you just constructed. So in terms of the timing, a delay beyond a mattering of weeks would be the, the absolute drop dead date. Because otherwise you would have constructed something you'd have to rip out to put in new. So the actual timing, I think I'll have Michael speak to his group is already under contract. And installing all of that foundation work now anticipating this large shade covering piece of art. And he can walk you through where that construction cycle is.
Thank you. Well, you know, and I, I just have to say, you know, part of the magic of this project at the northeast corner. It marries the past vision of the downtown park, this thirty-five year vision with kind of the future vision of the Grand Connection. And it all comes together at the northeast corner of the downtown park. You know, I think what's been designed really integrates the landscape and art together. So I don't think of the art as a separate piece. It's just one project. It's been broken into two segments though. You know, the park landscape is under construction now. The plaza where the piece of art will be. Will be constructed as a part of the landscape project, but then seamlessly, the park project will end. And then the artist fabrication and installation will happen seamlessly right after that. So it's really one period of construction, one period of disruption for the public before it can be opened next spring. So. You know, there is some magic in all this happening at once. And, and, and like I said, it's really, it's, it, the park landscape creates kind of the access, the, the entryway. But it's really the art that creates the space for people and the celebration space. And I think it is one project altogether in. I'll say two separate, two separate contracts.
So thank you. So council member Lee, you brought up something really interesting about public-private partnerships. And I, I think it's too late to consider that for this, but it's not too late to start thinking about that for the future. And I'd like you to ask that you work with council member Stokes as chair of the liaison to the Arts Commission. And, and possibly staff, but maybe you and council member Stokes can come up with something to present to staff that we could consider. As a city in terms of developing those public-private partnerships and applying them to our, to our arts projects like that. Would that work for you?
Yes, thank you for making that bold suggestion. I appreciate it because. You know, I would be happy to, you know, as I mentioned, I support this unquestionably. And reserve it. It's just a matter of timing. And so I'm looking for reasons in which, you know, I think staff's trying to articulate. That the number one, you know, Michael Shiasaki, he used the word magically, you know, that's hard to, to defend. You know, so what is that, right? But I have to have something, you know, unfortunately, I'm an engineer in training. So I need to have something concrete to grapple with. Yes, I would be happy to do that, to understand. And also I believe magic. I do believe magic. That's why I'm a, I'm on the city council. If you don't believe in magic, you should not be in politics.
So, okay. So, all right, thank you.
Yeah. So the one thing, again, working with the council members, so I just want to be sure. That the characterization that we are on the, we are understanding that this is not something I just dreamed up last minute. No, it is something that we're just aware that we need to spend money. And COVID nineteen just happened. Six months ago. Well, the impact of it, I won't say happened. I don't know when that happened. Nobody knows for sure. Okay, the impact, we're feeling the impact of it even knowing more of it. So this is to me a. New conversation and realistic conversation based on what's happening, that impact on people. That's it. So we can work on that basis with that understanding. I think that'd be great. But if we don't agree on the premises, that we don't, you know, then we difficult. But I'd be happy to give it a shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so deputy mayor, can you make a motion, please?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution ninety-eight fifteen, authorizing execution of a general services contract regarding fabrication and installation of a landmark artwork. As part of the northeast corner gateway, the downtown park with artists, the very many, an amount not to exceed eight hundred and ten thousand dollars per solid total taxes to build and install artwork celebrating this key location of the Grand Connection in downtown. And support the growth of tourism in downtown Bellevue.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I will still vote no, but in the spirit of, you know, collaboration, I hope, you know, we'll work on it. Yeah. So I have to. Vote for no without the information, the facts that, you know, give me the assurance and or at least peace of mind, let's say. Okay, so I vote for no.
Okay, so that passes. And so I guess in the spring, we'll have a beautiful completed gateway to our downtown park with an installation. And it will be all completed. Thank you very much, staff, for explaining that to us. And thank you, council member Lee, for bringing that up.
Thank you very much, council members, for taking the time to share. Thanks.
I think this brings us to the close of the meeting. Thank you very much. We will see you next week. The meeting is adjourned.